The governor's March 15th, 2020 order has imposed strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Select Board that we conduct would be a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines to remote participation by members of the public and/or parties to the right board requirement is what's in this meeting can be found on the town's website. The Select Board and the county administrator will meet in person and approve the Hubbardston Board of direction given at their March 23rd, 2021 meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every opportunity made to ensure that the public has access to proceedings at every time being still. In the event we are unable to do so, despite this effort, we will post our website to complement the party proceedings.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we'll move to open session. Is anyone here or on chat like or session? Do we know?
So it looks like standard here for open session.
I can too. General consent. Uh appointment of the agricultural commission to David Marsh Hall. We need one of the boys. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
David Marsh Hall. I'll second that. Want to make a second discussion and questions? Not more favoring Pat?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. We've been to the Vietnam Memorial Committee. Laura Foley is alternate. Again, all we need is the motion.
I'll make the motion to Laura Foley to Vietnam Memorial Committee as an alternate.
Second. Second. Motion made in second. Discussion. David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes. Uh we have a copy of those minutes of April 26th, 21st. Make sure they're.
I see.
I thought we all knew. All right, we passed on the April 17th. That was the three of us. So um we can take a motion to accept the 17th, May 23rd.
I'll make a motion to the first May 17th, 21st.
Second.
May in second. You might give. Discussion. Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff is.
So.
And back in state. So we'll move the April 26th, 21st, David, to look like the next first meeting. Lloyd. Uh. So something is trying to get in.
Is it a panelist or attendee? Uh it'd be a panelist to go.
She is a panelist.
Well, it looks like you are not. It looks like you're actually an attendee. You can't do.
I got Laurie's name.
Hold on.
I just talked to Laurie and doing like one of your.
So at least the main are.
I think this is the host. Is there a mouse pet?
That's your mouse, but I don't believe this. I think Laurie's the host.
Yeah.
This account is just a panelist. She like. Her participants are here and this person Sandra has her hand raised, but she's already a panelist. So she is unmuted. She has her video stopped, but that's nothing we're controlling.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I can hear you now. We couldn't hear. I couldn't hear you before.
Okay. Another chair and keyboard from.
That's fine. Just let me know when I you want to go back and let me discuss an open session.
Go ahead, discuss.
Do that now. Go ahead, Sandra.
Okay, sorry about that. And I apologize. I tried to get on your agenda, but I wasn't able to get ahold of Aaron last week to get on your agenda. So I just want to update. Um you guys are the what a selectmen on the playground installation. Um and I'm looking for some guidance or the parks is looking for some guidance. So we were slated to have the playground install on June 14th. And I have been communicating with Travis from the DPW regarding that. He seems to want to get the playground, what he needs to do for us done as soon as possible. So I guess I need some guidance from you. How long do you want the fence taken down, that playground taken down? Um the 12 foot, the 12 inches, I'm sorry, excavation done and left as a big hole until the new install can take place?
Oh. Of the 14th. Is that what you're saying?
Excuse me?
You're saying until the the install of that.
Correct. Correct. And what happened unfortunately was the manufacturer of the playground equipment had a fire on May 14th. And they were shut down until today. And I spoke to our vendor today and he says that it's probably going to delay our install by about two weeks. And he's really probably looking at the first week of July for the installation.
Okay. We should probably act on this as soon as possible to beat the end of school. Because once schools out, more kids are going to be down there. David?
Well.
Well, if you, okay, so the only thing I'm thinking about is do we really want a big freaking hole when we have our fair?
Well, that's my concern too. Like how long are we? I mean, I'm trying to put DPW off as long as close to the install as possible. Um I just need your guidance as in because I was hoping DPW would take it down. There'd be no more than like a week and then the install would happen. Um but I feel like DPW kind of wants to do it today. And I'm thinking, well, we're going to have a big hole there for a month. Six weeks.
So why is, why is Travis wanting to get it done so quickly? Is there a reason?
I haven't asked. I'm just being respectful and trying to do my best to accommodate everyone.
Well, we can't have a lawsuit though if someone falls in a big hole or you know what I mean? Like so the least amount of time I'm gonna, I think the least amount of time a big hole is better. And Travis is just gonna have to push it off. So we can like the least amount of time with a big hole.
When is, when is the new construction starting, Sandra?
So we're not going to know. I'm going to know at the end of the week, the exact date because it got delayed because of the fire. But he did tell me he thought the first week of July, but he's going to confirm with me um the end of this week when our new install date is going to be.
So you don't want Travis up there till the last week of June?
I don't, you know, or I or at least coordinate, you know, when I have, um when I have the exact date. Once I get the date, they're going to be right on time is what he said. The installer.
Okay. Travis and let him know that and let you know what we come up with.
Don't worry, get into the situation where. Your understanding. It's hard going to be estimated. So. We need to check with Travis.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you're getting at, right? You want to push Travis off till the end of June?
Well, yes, I mean, I'm doing my best to coordinate with his schedule. Um but right now, unfortunately, I, you know, my install date got moved. And I won't know till the end of the month when that or the end of this week, when that date will be.
Right. And the best solution for safety and everything else is to have Travis flex his schedule to accommodate us. We don't have a giant hole out there for people to get hurt.
That, that's how I feel.
Okay, so I'll talk to Travis about it, see what his concerns are and I'll let you know.
Okay, and I have one more question in regards to that, in regards to that. So um with this playground install, um there it's all going to be ADA compliant and it's going to have a rubberized path throughout the playground. But we need to input a small tarred path from the parking lot to the entrance of the playground. I'm estimating that's not going to be any more than five feet wide, which is ADA compliant rules and maybe 15 or 20 feet long. I was going to ask DPW if they would do that and parks would pay for the tar and their material. Um but I kind of feel like I'm overwhelming them. And I guess I just need to ask, is that inappropriate request? Or should I go look for a company to come put this small paved path in?
I think it's certainly worth asking if they can possibly do it first. But I think the idea of having it is supposed to having no direct, you know, that's over, that can spend the money on the playground.
I don't see why the DPW, not to sit there and help stuff for Travis to do, but I know he has a long list, but I mean, that's part of all the equipment that we have. If he has the equipment, do it. And it's on our property. Why would we go elsewhere? You know what I mean? That doesn't make any sense in my mind.
I think we should give Travis the first opportunity to see if he can get that done for us in conjunction with getting up there to tear down the playground. So I'll ask him that also. See if he can handle putting it five feet wide, 20 feet long.
It's approximate. I mean, you know, I have, we haven't measured exactly from the, you know, parking lot to the entrance to the playground, but it shouldn't be, I'm going to say more than 20 feet. 20, 25. It's not going to be very big. And my biggest concern is I'm not going to get a company to come out and do that.
Right. Nobody's going to want to come out to do such.
Yeah, exactly. But I also feel like I'm overwhelming the DPW. But my personal opinion is this is a once in a lifetime thing. It's not going to happen again for 25 years. So, you know, there you go.
Well, let Travis tell us that we're overwhelming him.
Okay.
Maybe. Eyes to then. Put it before the board in the interest of saving time since this is our last meeting until after the election. Chris is going to talk to Travis, but if Travis okay's all this, why don't we as a board act now so that if Travis says yes, we're saying that's what we want done. Meaning the uh excavation waiting until, what'd you say, like a week before installation?
Yeah, whatever it's, whatever she gets back.
Because if we don't do it that way, then Chris is going to have to come back whenever we have a next, next board meeting and we're going to have.
Well, do we have to come back earlier? Just give them permission to make the.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting that we as a board say that we want that to be done, assuming Travis indicates that he can handle it.
I'll make a motion that Chris can handle coordinating with parks and.
So if you get an okay, then this is like basically what you're saying. Want to make a second out of that?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Okay, on favor. Okay, all right.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes. Jeff? Yes, so you get to go ahead and then jump in there.
Very good.
All right. I thank you all for your support and I'm looking forward to this project. It's going to be great.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh yes. Uh we were talking about stuff that just happened. So this past weekend, we had, uh it was the walk on the field of some property, which this one actually went through. I think I had a chance to go the first one. Um to see the property and ask questions. The Open Space Committee was there, well, at least three of them. And the East County Land Trust was there. So I picked their brains a little bit and luckily I was not in the front of the path walking because everyone that was in front of us walking was covered in ticks, which is it's horrible out there. It was ridiculous. Myself and my daughter that walked were in the back of the path. So we didn't, we didn't get covered with ticks. So I have a video of everyone that was in front. But I did see a lot of familiar faces from town out there. So it was a good day and a nice little walk out there on that property. Um coming up, we have the Hubbardston Fair on June 12th, 92. We have a lot of different vendors coming, lots of different food, bands and all kinds of good fun stuff. Um jugglers, ukulele players, you know, all kinds of fun things. So it's definitely a day for your blankets or your cute chairs. Come spend the day with us, 9 to 2 on the 12th. If it rains, we'll be on the 13th. Then the next thing that we have coming up is August 14th for 9 to 1. Hubbardston True, 11809 is doing another bottle and can drive. So if you still have bottles and cans sitting at your house or you've been accumulating some more, bring them down to the right field. Uh you can drop them off. The girls will be glad to take them. They'll sort them and they will recover forage for that. Um then we have August 28th at 10 a.m. D dash on River, River Pond. Applications to enter that contest are online under special events. Um it's a fun day. Top prize is 300 bucks. And if you don't want to enter, just come down and watch because it's definitely a load of fun just to watch and people say it's definitely interesting day. And then on September 18th, you have Field Day from 9 to 2, rainy day of the 19th. The Lions are working on that. I've been helping fill up field and yeah, that will be a hopefully a fun day as well. So we got a few good events coming up over the summer to keep everyone occupied.
For. The update, we have signed the documents. David, you want to comment? I'm talking about this.
Right.
My plan has on it.
So we're borrowing money for both playground and Hubbardston Center School project. Uh the playground, we have announced bid for a bond, five-year bond. And the one bid we got was at 2.1% for $150,000. And that will take care of that project. I talked to our chief financial advisor about the interest rate of 2.1. He said it's pretty much in the ballpark. He recommends that we go.
So would we, a motion just to accept it enough? Since we already signed it? Okay, uh I'll make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the playground.
It's $150,000, it's at 2.1% for five years.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the playground loan for $2.1% for five years.
Second.
Make a second. Discussion, questions? On favor, Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat? Jeff? Yes.
And the second one is a bond anticipated, very enough, one-year bond. One-year band rather, for $650,000 for the first part of Hubbardston Center School project. So when you're at 0.38%.
So same type of motion then?
Did we get any feedback on that percentage rate? The other one?
Yeah.
It led to a good rate of comfort rate.
We're good since.
So I'll make a motion to accept Hubbardston Center School loan for $660,000, one year for 0.38.
600.
Oh, that's 50. I'm sorry. It looks like 650. I apologize also.
Am I right?
Yeah, it's well, yeah.
Motion made in second. Any discussion, questions? Katie?
Hi.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
The ARPA funds data.
All right, so this was a discussion that probably takes the attention of the entire board. The US Department of Treasury has released finally the guidelines for this of the millions of dollars that are billions of dollars actually. Never put a flow from the federal government to. Our share of that is expected to be about $1.1 million. We can use it for for purposes. Those purposes are. To cover responses by the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. And its negative economic impacts, that can be to tenants, landlords, businesses, any, anything that you can point to that have negative economic impact. Provide people's premium pay for employees to perform essential work during COVID-19 public health emergencies. So anybody who has been in a phase of overtime on this or incentive or essential work, this is police, this is frontline medical people, this is fire. This is farm workers. It's for people in grocery stores, pharmacies, anybody that to provide government services to the extent of the collection of revenue. We need so newer ambulance receipts very big in that 21. So that's directly attributed to back to everybody to stay at home and deferring medical attention. So we could use the money to support that shortfall. And then for most interest, in particular, the town of Hubbardston, use that money to invest. Wonder so we're broadband with structure. We've had running discussion about inadequacies of self-implication in our broadband. It's public health issue, it's a safety issue, it's an equity issue. This is one for the state counties and approaching cities in Massachusetts that have populations of 50,000 or higher are receiving their funds in May of this year. First of the other towns in common are going to be receiving their funds from the state 30 days after that. So sometime June, we should see $750,000. And then 12 months after that, the other 700,000. We have to spend that money by December 31st, 2024. So it feels like a long time, but this.
Unless you start allocating.
Yeah.
There, right?
So some point we should have the board discussion about how you. Did a various concert. Going in one direction.
I would be up to pass on it. Uh uh would it be proper to schedule it for the first meeting of the new board or do you think we should pass on it for longer than that?
Um I think getting, getting directions from town leadershipers to having spending this money, thinking about. Would be very valuable. So.
So just say pass on it for a later date then. You know, open?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Um to the board here, as far as it would request for proposal assessing services. Same people did it before. They were the only ones who did it. And so all we need is the motion to accept it. You should move resource group. Same one. We got, we have that.
I'll make a motion. For excessive service on that.
First, first year.
78, 8. 8,000.
Second. Motion made in second. Discussion. David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Um David, would you like to fill us in on the 5K road race? You said someone's going to be.
Somebody here. See.
How is the 5K road race? Is that, uh, is that the?
My car.
The library one? What's that? 5K road race?
If I'm right, you better write too. That would be a really big comment.
All right.
Is somebody here to talk about the 5K road race, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody's supposed to be here.
Who is it? Um is it? Hold on. Is it Deborah?
No.
Hold on. I just moved her over. The only one I have is listed under Damon Schmidt, which was under old business. And David, for some reason, you come up. So I just moved over Deborah. Uh hold on. Let's see who it is in case they're on a different iPad.
All right, can you let Deborah in?
I just let her in. Yeah, she's in. She just, Deborah, you got to unmute if you're there or Deborah's iPad. It shows. There's somebody listed under Deborah's iPad that I just kicked over. I, like I said, that's the only other attendee that I see other than again Damon. So they're in, but I'm asking them to unmute and they're still muted and their camera is off. So I cannot see or hear them.
Why don't we move on and then if you get her, Laurie, let us know.
Okay, yep. I'll message her now.
Okay, we'll move on then. The side, next item, David's recommended, pass on a special mention. I really have a request from DPW for. Special mention. Outright foul. Turns out we still don't qualify for. Special mention. So we have this by disclosure. Um this town hasn't looked at special municipal employees stats since 1903. So commission such as into that. So as far as more discussion. The intricacy about the special municipal employees is that it's a position of person. So it's the position is that branch that status in the entire conservation mission. Status. It doesn't extend so you take that. Voting to rescind that definition. So sometimes helpful in small towns to have that special. Because it allows for representation. Better communication between boards without. Better communication between boards without. But I don't. On the next one. Give you some information on this. The company has scholarship, two names have been put forward. Or a pool, should we approve, just require a motion for each individual? And then the intent being to invite them to a future meeting. So. It's a five hundred dollar scholarship each. Two names, first one, excuse me, Juliana Amato Enson and Catherine Keel. So again, what is okay with those name, name report? If you want to make a motion, first you just put first girl's name in. New amount of five hundred dollars.
Sure, I'll make a motion to. Scholarship to Juliana Amato Enson, new amount of five hundred dollars.
I think that's Enson.
Enson.
Check. It's, no, you were right, my, my, Enson. Okay, motion made. Second. Second, motion made in second. Any discussion? Home favorite, Pat?
Yes.
Katie? Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. Next motion, and that would be for Catherine Keel.
I'll make the motion to part the twenty twenty one scholarship to Catherine Keel. New amount of five hundred dollars.
Second half. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Home favorite, Pat? Katie? Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. Okay. And if I end up to be designated. Okay. This next item. You want to, again, this favor in terms of. You'll win it at this particular point in time.
Now. Statement on board. Hi. Hello, can you hear us? Hi.
I just moved them over.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, David.
All right. You guys want me to start, or I'm sorry, I was waiting.
Three questions. All right, why don't you start, David?
Yeah, basically, I, I had two things tonight. Uh, I needed to, I guess, schedule a community outreach meeting for sometime in June. Uh, and then also I was just following up to see when we could hopefully get the correction going for the HC that we already have.
So I didn't hear you clearly, are you asking for the community meeting? Meeting that you.
Hi, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you as well. Um, the Zoom meeting hasn't had great service the whole time, but yeah, I'm looking to get a date that we can hold a community outreach meeting.
Damon, what is this one for? Just out of curiosity?
Well, the big thing that we need to do is update our phase two for the CCC. And I don't know if any of you had the pleasure of reading Tom Bracco's letter. Um, but you have someone who used to be in the planning board now speaking for the town and what the town's intent is with your bylaws. Uh, and he made a mistake of sending that to the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, and he also sent it to the planning board and I emailed you guys a copy of it today. Um, so my response is definitely going to come. Um, I think he's trying to delay us and he's going to be responsible for my lost revenue, which is going to be in the millions of dollars. Um, so we're gonna, you know, respond to him with my attorney very soon. But one of the things he had mentioned was a community outreach meeting and we need to have one anyhow. So we're just gonna have another one and just satisfy him and talk about what we're currently doing. Uh, but we also need to talk about phase two of what we're doing across the street. Uh, that way we satisfy the CCC regulations when we reapply.
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen the letter, Damon, but satisfying Tom Bracco is not high on my list of priorities. I mean, we satisfied what the town wants and what the town needs and what bylaws are and what the, you know, the CCC needs are. And I haven't seen the letter, I don't know in detail about what you're speaking. Um, so I need more information about that whole situation before I'm prepared to make a decision about any of it.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't, you know, not asking, I guess, for, you know, anyone's opinion or anything on his letter. I really just more sent it to you guys as an FYI of, you know, what's going on. Um, but yeah, we, we need, we need to hold a community outreach meeting anyhow.
Good.
Mr. Schmidt, would it be better if, uh, if you've got your permit from the planning board before holding the community outreach meeting? Uh, that way you can speak specifically to what the planning board is approved?
Uh, no, I'd really like to just get it, you know, over as soon as possible. I've already spoke to the CCC today. Um, and you only can imagine how many a butters send in letters claiming things. Um, so luckily the CCC doesn't even want a response from me, uh, which is good. Um, so, but I'm still going to cover all of our bases. I mean, there's millions of dollars at risk here. Uh, so to schedule a community outreach meeting, we have to put in advertisement in the newspaper fourteen days ahead of time. So I was looking, you know, if you guys did it like on a Monday, June twenty first, that's about as early as I can do. Um, the CCC is not going to respond to Tom's letter negatively towards me, but in case they ever did, while we have a community outreach meeting, we held all over again. So we're kind of covering our basis, but reality is, is I have phase two that's coming and I need to update my license for that.
Well, isn't your next meeting with the planning board on June third or fourth?
Yeah.
Okay, so then in reality, if you were passed, this, the June twenty first would be after you were approved, if you got approved at that meeting, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, if you gave me like a date of June twenty first, I'm not sure when, when your meetings are towards the end of June. You know, I would have to reach out to Gardner News or wherever we're gonna do it this week to get a place for next week. So that's why I'm asking tonight for a date.
Yeah, you would go, you have to get stuff.
No, I'm still saying.
So what date is June twenty first or after?
June twenty first is the night of your flight.
So we do have one scheduled?
Yeah.
Is, do we have anything heavy on that? But would that be possible to schedule an outreach meeting at that point?
It would be possible.
And this is a meeting where they're attending, or is this a Zoom meeting?
This is, this is. Obligation. Um, we can be cooperative in space.
Oh, I see, okay. Are we will be in public at that point?
He has to do a public meeting.
No, no.
Oh, yes, yes.
Compared to Zoom. So this would be an in-person meeting?
An in-person meeting where everything goes.
And how? So here's, here's the problem. Where are we having said meeting because that, well, wait a minute, our, our quantities dropped for the amount of people that can be in a room at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Okay.
So we can invite meeting, we can invite Damon to come here that Monday night at our meeting. We can turn the meeting over to him and he can run his meeting as part of our select board, right? And anybody who wants to be present, I can come in person for this room. Entertain David, I mean, entertain Damon and then question.
I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah. That's as good as any for me. Does anybody have any concerns with that thing? That work for you, David? All right, you're on for the twenty first, Damon.
All right, I promised to keep it relatively short, we won't have it be as long as last time.
We'll advertise that you're gonna be here, you're gonna have your meetings.
It's. Will it be Zoom? I was having trouble hearing you.
Well, we're gonna be in person here at the slate building.
Oh, wow.
So bring the popcorn, because I'm sure.
All right, it's my first public outing, I guess, it's gonna be scary.
Should we be in a bigger? I, yeah, we can open like we did last time. I was in the next room and I was watching it on seniors TV because there was too many people here. When you're advertising this, will you be stating in the advertising what the intent of the meeting is?
Yeah.
Because of the last time you were here, we had people attending who thought that they could still vote it down, even though we had to keep reminding them the town is already ready voted for this. So. Yeah, you're still gonna get to that one. You'll still get.
I could put a little one, let one sentence blurb in there if you want. Uh, generally what we do is just use the template that the Cannabis Control Commission gives us and that's what we put in the newspaper. But I could put a little line under there that we're not voting against it.
Oh, that sounds good, Damon, that's all I got.
David? Okay, we're all set then.
All right, and then I guess a, at some point, I mean, it seems like we don't have the best Zoom connection tonight. Uh, but I do, you know, I do need to get that contract ultimately fixed that we have.
Mr. Schmidt, could you give me a call?
Yeah.
And you and I can talk about this.
All right, that I can do. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
June twenty first.
The governor relaxing standards for most restrictions on May twenty ninth. Later, okay. Two fifteen. Respect to the state. The kickoff meeting for the Robertson Center School roof project. We finished the agenda, so we continue working on that. And the meeting is coming up. Each candidate tonight is going to be Thursday at six o'clock in the senior center. And I think I'm supposed to host it. Ryan.
Ryan, Ryan.
He was the moderator.
Yeah, he did. But prior to that, it was just one of the seniors, a lot of your organized it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ryan. Get the word out.
I hired a driver for Mark Stanley Johnson. He has a signature thing.
Where are we signing? Not, not ones. Is it just another thing to be initialled? That's for. Chair. All of us are gonna find a list. This one, you're being chair. It's all you.
So where am I signed?
That second line.
Oh, right here?
Nope.
Oh.
Data, data today?
And chief of police came to me and recommended Jonathan Sturgis to full-time condition. To. Check this back. I said yes, but you won't have a chance.
So. That's it. Yeah. Well, he was, he was hard time.
Yeah.
I missed that because I was signing, I didn't hear what I'm saying. John Sturgis is now a full-time. Oh. I've ruled it all down in one sentence. Um, anything about the cell tower, did anything go out of bid yet? Because I've been asked like four times in the past week.
The email, look, the Mr. Moriarty is very up. Soon as I hear.
It's like, seriously, I don't understand how long. I don't understand how long it's, the cell tower. Well, the last, the last information we got on that, because I've been reading paperwork on it, was that they had to do a study on the ground underneath to see if they're. They did that. For the tower, they discovered the, etc. Attached to. Yeah, that was not, why? Yeah. And still.
We have more positions, we have, how we take that side down. I think it's still there.
Is it?
Sign the Vincent's report. As everyone promised.
The proposed.
Bringing it up for the last two years, we're waiting for the final dealing to be done on that land. So.
Yeah, what is, what is it said?
Giant sales sign, it's been there for eight years. Across from the rock field, they can just cut it down.
For sale sign needs to go.
That's my last thing.
Can we have the GPW's? Yeah. Can you ask Travis?
I'm sure they.
Have the guys take care of it, David?
Yeah. No, they, Vincent's did, but it's our land.
Oh, not for sale, yeah, not for sale.
I've been asking for like two years.
Yeah, because they're digging on that.
They sold that.
Yeah. Okay, oh, down there on there you go, really? They sell it to the, the builders? Oh, they sold it to Donna?
Yeah.
Oh, cool, good. So that is for the town administration board?
That's it.
Okay. So we'll, you'll ask Travis to come and take a find that. Sure, okay, thank you. Policies to review, anything?
Uh, no.
Okay. Board committee update, any of that?
Question. We always have the moderator, town council, finance committees. Sometimes Tom Clark. Into a meeting hour. Just to make sure that everything's. Sometimes we're ash enough. I wouldn't be dying.
No.
I mean, I think we did that once or twice in the past, but.
I get there early anyway.
I, I won't be.
Oh, you want to answer something? Really, blast rock? Really?
Well, that would be something to talk about because you've got speaking side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just using the motion. How about you guys, can you be? I'll be there here early. I first. I'll be excited seven, so. Six o'clock. You first, six o'clock.
Yeah, I, I can, I'm not making a call.
Yeah, I never. I don't remember seeing that. You too.
I think we did it once or twice.
What's that?
Prior to.
Yes. Yes, we did.
Yeah, even just a select board.
The last, not last year, two years before that, it was the open house thing. That's a little bit, yeah. Because that's what I was there for, I'd sit there. But, yeah. Last year maybe. I would like to add one thing. Before we return on behalf of the board and myself. Served. In behalf of the town, I'd like to thank you for your services, Pat. Six years, appreciated, I enjoyed working with you.
I'd be glad to give it up.
Thank you very much, sir. Didn't want to let that go.
No, thanks, sir.
Especially when you're experiencing, we're trying to be town meeting.
Yeah.
So I'll be happy to follow this, thank you very much.
I'll, I'll miss it.
I.
No, I won't. I can tell you're getting a motion.
Yes. I should point out, we're still recording.
No, it was good. No, it was good.
So thank you again, and good luck in your endeavors. All right, item nine, Matt is not in recent, presently anticipated with the chair, nothing that I know of. Or any chance of operating of the press. On the chat. Laurie, are you still with us?
I am, um, let me see, I don't see anything, there's nothing in the attendees, let me just double check the chat real, hold on one sec. Nothing.
Okay, then. Second half. Second. Favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Being during.